Good evening everyone, a very warm welcome to all of you to this special session on Integrated Business Solutions paper organized by Board of Studies Academy. Today, we will explore key strategic insights into one of India's most research-driven global competitive sector. This sector is pharmaceutical. The industry doesn't just create medicines, it creates value. It creates value through innovation, trust, through compliance and growth with business strategy. India's pharmaceutical sector is valued over fifty billion US dollars and it plays important role in ensuring global access to affordable medicines. With the rise of biotechnology, personalized medicines and digital health care platforms, the industry is transitioning from a well-volume-based model to a significant model. What makes this transformation particularly strategic is how cost efficiency, innovation and intellectual property converge to build sustainable competitiveness. Pharma companies today are not just manufacturers, they are research, research-led innovators, balancing between R and D investment, regulatory compliances and cost control. The shift highlights the growing importance of strategic cost management, performance measurement and intangible assets valuation. Please note, intangible assets are very, very important for the pharmaceutical sector. Therefore, whenever a question comes, okay, it means it may be connected with India's thirty-eight. Three critical pillars of this paper includes regarding this, this pharma industry. Number one is innovation and intellectual property. Patents, patents are very, very important. Patents are light blood of pharmaceutical company and its business model. They provide exclusive right to innovate, recoup R and D investments and gain competitive advantage. A strong patent strategy is essential for safeguarding discoveries while enabling technology licensing joint ventures or any other thing. Therefore, patents are very, very important for this industry. Accounting and compliances, as I told you earlier, India's thirty-eight intangible assets are very, very important here. Under India's thirty-eight, pharmaceutical companies must recognize and measure intangible assets such as, such as patents, brand, R and D, know-how, software, etc. This ensures, this ensures transparency in financial reporting and helps investors to evaluate actual, actual situation of a business. Furthermore, government grants, government grants related to R and D and innovations are always come in this sector. Therefore, India's twenty, India's twenty is very important here. Further, cost leadership and strategic differentiation is also significant here with increasing competition from generic medicines or other forms are very, very important. Further, from ethical marketing practice to ESG reporting is also very important. To evaluate success, pharma companies now measure performance through multi-dimensional framework. Okay, there are, you know, there are so many types of framework of some are financial and some are non-financial. Financial performance measures are like ROI, RI, EVA and non-financial measures are building block model, performance prism, performance pyramid or balanced scorecard. Balanced scorecard is a mix of financial and non-financial performance measure, okay? Why I am discussing this, this, these strategic tools because some strategic models may be asked in your examinations, okay? Therefore, whenever you are discussing any case study, any question, any case scenario, try to correlate and link with particular or applicable business models, okay? This integrated perspective ensures that innovation and compliance coexist, aligning with philosophy of Integrated Business Solution paper. Today's case study is from Students' Journal, explores a scenario where a pharmaceutical company invests heavily in developing of new drug, receives government grant and later obtains a patent, raising key questions on intangible assets recognition, valuation and strategic management decisions. It encourages you to think critically about how accounting standard, cost management, strategic decision making interlink in real business context. The case also touches Michael Porter's value chain, okay? And Kano's model, helping us understand how pharmaceutical companies can identify value creation opportunities from R and D to aftermarket services while sustaining differentiation through innovation. We are privileged to welcome C A Anshul Agarwal, partner at V Singi and Associates to today's session, a highly respected chartered accountant and, and a strategic advisor. His insights will help you to connect learning with practical applications and innovation-driven sectors like pharma where compliances, finance and strategy are correlated. With that, let us commence today's session and explore the case in detail. C A Anshul sir, over to you.
Yes, thank you Deepak ji for warm encouraging words for the students and as well as for me and also highlighting the influence of pharmaceutical center and its sector and its financial reporting and how our C A students when they become chartered accountants can be an advisor to across the industry including pharmaceutical industry and U B S tariffs and all.
Sir, your voice is not clear. Sir, your voice is not clear.
Just a minute, let me check my internet. Is it better now?
Sir, still it is not clear.
Still not clear. Okay. How is it now, is it better than earlier?
Sir, again it is cracking, sir.
Neen yaar, just log in it one please.
Students. मैं आपको थोड़ा सा यहाँ पे हिंदी में भी एक्सप्लेन करता हूँ जो मैंने अभी आपको बताया था कि देखिए ये जो पेपर है Integrated Business Solutions, ठीक है, ये बहुत easy paper है, easy इस sense में कि आपको ये मालूम होना चाहिए कि आपको किस तरीके से पढ़ना है, ठीक है? Integrated Business Solutions, कहीं ना कहीं कोई भी business है, कोई भी industry है तो आप ये मानेंगे कि जो industry है, ठीक है, कहीं ना कहीं तो कोई strategic decision होगा और उस decision के base पे आपके financial decision भी हो सकते हैं, ठीक है? आपके compliances-related decisions भी हो सकते हैं, ठीक है? तो एक case study को, एक case study के अंदर आपके interconnected decisions होंगे, ठीक है? अगर pharma की case study है, तो pharma के अंदर आपको पता है कि pharma के अंदर जो है patent का अपना रोल होता है, ठीक है? Generic medicines की concept होती है, ठीक है? तो जब patent, patent का अपना रोल है, तो इस situation में क्या होगा? कि ये हमारी intangible assets है और intangible assets तो India's thirty-eight apply हो नहीं होना है? तो यानी कि India's thirty-eight से related जो provision है वो यहाँ पर applicable होंगे, ठीक? इसी तरीके से government grants, ठीक है? इसी तरीके से जो भी related compliances है, industry specific वो connect होंगे ही होंगे. Okay, students, Anshul sir has joined, sir, over to you.
Yes. Thank you very much Deepak ji for taking through the relationship of Indian accounting standards with pharmaceutical industry in terms of India's thirty-eight and India's twenty in terms of government grants. I hope I am quite audible now to everyone.
Yes sir. Ah yes sir, yes sir.
Thank, thank you very much for responding on audio also. So, can I know like how is our students reach today now, are all, are all of us appearing in January two thousand twenty-six?
Yes sir.
Okay, Neen has responded that she is appearing for January two thousand twenty-six.
Yes sir.
Neen Agarwal for May two thousand twenty-six. Anyone who had an experience of appearing this paper earlier, maybe in September twenty-five or May two thousand twenty-five? Okay, so how was your experience Geeta, if you can just put in a brief in a minute, we can come on audio and I would want the session to be quite interactive, so that I also learn from our students because you must have been doing articleship across the industry and the syllabus has become so dynamic now that even we have to refer C A final study material sometimes even during the course of practice. Yes please.
Yes sir, it is very difficult if we don't know about all the subjects then it's very difficult to manage it and practice should be must sir.
So, did you appear for any mock test before the exams?
No sir, no sir, I have not appeared for.
Sorry?
Not appeared for mock test sir.
So everyone should appear for mock test, it is my sincere request to everyone.
Okay, definitely sir, hundred percent.
For all subjects, at least once. Yeah, any more responses?
Sir, actually I also appeared for this paper in September two thousand twenty-five but unfortunately I am not able to clear it this time. I am not able how to deal with this paper sir, I am not able how to crack this paper. Actually, I have cleared my group one in May two thousand twenty-four and now it's been more than one year. So I am not able how I can recall all the things at a moment and apply on a practical basis. So can you please give me some guidance?
So you are appearing for D T I D T and this paper, correct?
Yes sir, yes sir.
So can you tell me a two problems so that I can be specific and talk on, talk relevant?
Okay, sir, actually I am not able how to prepare for this paper because I, the in group one which I have learned, I forget not almost but I forgot some concept but I am not able how I can manage all the subject at a time because I have only two months now and how I am again prepare for those paper.
Okay.
Miss, I, I am not able, the strategy behind this paper, what is the, what is the strategy to clear this paper?
See, first thing the studies is, I think you should be relaxed first, okay? Be relaxed, don't think much about the questions, okay? Don't think that whether you would be pass or you would be fail also, okay? But since you had appeared for the first group and cleared with the first group two years back, couple of years back, so you have to revise some concepts of audit, law and financial reporting as well, okay?
Okay sir, okay sir.
When we talk about this paper, I think from first group, law, audit and financial reporting would be much more relevant and a few chapters of strategic financial management as well.
Yes sir.
I think now called AFM. So, my request is, you may not be able to go through the entire book, yes? But our students journal are very, very helpful, okay? There are lot of pictorial diagrams and every month there is a student journal on particular subject.
Okay sir.
And earlier in our days, the concept of student journal started somewhere in two thousand sixteen or seventeen and when I qualified in May two thousand seventeen, May two thousand seventeen, I particularly remember there was a student journal in the subject called ISCA. Information system and control audit which has been moved away from C A final syllabus.
Hmm hmm.
And that subject was, used to be a tougher subject for everyone including me. So when I got the student journal in the particular month of May, just before, ten days before the ISCA exam, my exams had already started. It was, it, it used to be paper number six and when I received that student journal, I went to the student journal a lot of times, one day before the exam, okay? I had, though I had read the entire subject but the revision was very much important, okay?
Okay sir.
So you need to collect. So you need to collect student journals of last one or two years, maybe they are easily valuable in doubt in the I C A portal as well as maybe you can collect physical copies also, so that physical copies give you a much better understanding because they are quite learning may be very easy होता है. I hope Hindi is comfortable with you. So.
Yes sir, yes sir.
Request, my request to you would be to read the entire student's journal so that you get a thorough revision of what you had studied in group one, okay? So particularly case and law and audit, so you will be able to remember or get the concepts cleared. And it is necessary while you go exam that you take a trolley of books or maybe multiple books and all. I just, he is speaking to a student in my office and he did not even take a single book, okay? Why? Because lot of materials you take to the exam center, lot of things you take to the exam center and you are puzzled, where is this question coming from? Even in fact when Deepak ji called me last month to take a class on case studies, I B S paper, I took my first class, I think somewhere around twenty-first of October or twenty-third of October, whatever it is, the Friday, the third Friday of October, I was also quite nervous. I am to talk on case studies but and when I studied from case studies, I took it very, very seriously. But when I came down to the questions, I found that at least sixty, seventy percent of the questions were manageable.
Hmm.
They had nothing to do with the case study.
Yes sir.
Yes, so what, we have to be very, very strategic, like when you are when you, if you watch movies, if you are fond of watching, fond of watching movies, what do you do is when, when do you watch a movie, yes? When you see the trailer of that movie and you find it interesting and when you hear the reviews from my friends or colleagues or from the internet then you are inclined to watch that movie, yes? So, question paper, this paper number six, I B S, then you have to look from bottom to top of the question that whether, what does that question is about, okay? Not exactly go deeply to any question, just whether that question is making any sense to you or you are able to correlate with what you are, what you had studied earlier, whether a memory is being able to strike it up or not, yes? As you can, why these papers were introduced was to make yourself more competitive and to make yourself more presentable with the clients or in the industry because when you are at industry, then it is not only about India's, yes? When you are advising a client or when you are working on India's, you also have to think about tax, you also have to think about math, you also have about the payback period, you also think, you also have to think about how, how the financials are estate, are present, are to be presented to the banks, yes? Lot of things come together.
Yes sir.
Subject came together, in, in our syllabus. So, first you have to see right from top to bottom, what is the question talking about, what is the case study talking about? Okay, don't take it seriously, take it very lightly casually, just try to understand whether that is manageable to you or not, the entire case study. Just take a glimpse of that. Now you come down to the questions. There I am sure that you will find, I think maybe forty percent of the questions would be very plain vanilla type of questions.
Yes sir.
Case study, so I think there are six case studies out of that you have to appear for five years if I am correct?
No sir, after five we have to appear for four.
Okay, out of five we have to appear for four. So, the first fifteen, twenty minutes of your getting the paper, nowadays if you get paper at one forty-five, maybe at two o'clock or by two-five you have to determine which are those four questions which you are going to appear smoothly.
Yes sir, hmm hmm.
And my students, my dear students, I would like to clarify that there would be twenty, thirty marks of tough question in every, every paper of C A final. We are not appearing for C A Inter, we are not appearing for C A Foundation, these are not our become exams, these are not our B B exams, yes? So it is a natural, it is a phenomenal practice that twenty, thirty marks of the papers, the questions would not be coming directly from the book or you not be able to directly hit in one shot, just at one side, okay? So please do not panic at that point of time, please do not worry. वो बीस, तीस मक्षा क्वेश्चन सबके लिए टूफी होता है.
Yes sir.
So you should concentrate on what you know, what, what you are able to recall, okay? And at least if you write about eighty, eighty-five max also and if you are able to obtain sixty, sixty-five max, I think that's a good achievement.
Yes sir.
Eighty, hundred and getting forty-five rather than eighty, eighty-five and getting sixty, sixty-five.
Yes.
While you are already mentally prepared that I only need to prepare for, I only need to write for eighty-five marks, then your per-minute mark also increases, yes? You get a lot of time also, then you can improve in writing as well. You can think a lot about the questions which you remember and your quality of answer also improves.
Okay sir, I want to ask one more question.
Yes please.
Yes, whether.
To make some sense and maybe given you some idea and maybe in the rest, two and a half hours, three hours, I will be able to share more insights which would be relevant for you and everyone.
Yes sir.
Yes.
Sir, yeah, I wanna ask that whether we should do a writing practice of it, of each case every day for at least one or two case study by doing writing practice?
Definitely, definitely you must do, definitely, there is no brainer on that, you should do it.
Okay sir.
Without any fail.
Okay sir, actually what I did, what I did in the past, I only go through with the case study but never did a writing practice. So I think that's why where I was lacking.
So what happens is, see you keep on studying for three months, four months for C A final exams and what you do is, just before the exam you have one day gap, okay? Then you revise or go through the books and the syllabus and then next day at two o'clock you go for the exams, yes?
No sir, before, fifteen days before the exam, I just go through the case study which I say given on the, I say B O S portal that fifty case study, I go through it, this before fifteen days of the exam but not on, but not do any writing practice, I never did this.
But tell me what disturbs you from doing writing practice?
Sir, I thought that, I think only we have to find out the questions and where it is come, where it comes from, where the relevant chapter, I think I, I think that it should and then I will be able to clear it.
See, it is not only about appearing for exams, you pretend that you are advising a client through your C A final case study, yes?
Yes sir, yes sir.
Think that it is my client problem or think that it is my own business problem.
Hmm hmm.
And when you think that it is my problem then your brain, brain also thinks faster.
Yes sir.
Hope I think to this example everyone agrees.
जब, जब आपको लगता है ना कि आपको अपना portfolio manage करना है या जब आपको लगता है कि आपको अपना cash flow manage करना है तो सबका दिमाग का बत्ती थोड़ा ज्यादा चलने लग जाता है, correct?
Yes sir, of course.
Now, you just not think that you are only appearing for C A final exams but you think that you are appearing for your, some of your life exam.
Hmm.
Any other problems from any other students, please be open, this is a, I think interactive session and please do not feel that asking questions would make you embarrassing and I would like to take the session reverse way only so that I hear more from you and give my specific answers to you, though I'll definitely take you through the case study and some of the live annual reports, no worries on that.
Sir, actually so many pages are there, how to link the question with that and again read that question? This is not possible in fifteen to twenty minutes to decide which question we will do and which will not.
Okay, so in typical, I remember my C A final question papers, so they are in, given in double spacing or single good spacing, yes? Font, font size is also quite, I think sixteen or eighteen maybe. So कितने page का question होते हैं case study का?
Question is not lengthy but that sheet is forty pages. It is how to link the question with that and how to write this, it is very difficult sir.
Okay, so that was, I was trying to explain the same thing with Neen. When you get the question paper, you forget that it is forty page question paper.
Yes sir.
See, the question paper is forty pages or four pages, that is not going to matter, at the end you, what is going to be matter is how much you score in your exams, correct? And you be a chartered accountant.
Hmm hmm.
Why you worry that why it is forty pages or forty-five pages?
But without reading how to link the answers with this, because five, ten marks, five M C Qs are there, which are also linked with that.
Hmm.
And sir, actually between two paragraphs, there is no gap, so this is the also problem.
Yes.
All the paragraphs are interlinked, there is no gap, at least one or two line gap, there is no gap between them.
Do one thing, you have pencil, pencil or pen, is not?
Yes sir, I mark, yeah, I mark paragraph.
Scribbles करो, जब आपके study पढ़ रहे हो, exam में बैठे-बैठे, तो आप लिखा करो उसमें.
Hmm.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to open the whiteboard if available in Zoom and I'll show you how to make the scribbles and क्या होता है, देखो, again coming back to, I don't remember the name but किसका question, किसका point था कि forty marks का, forty pages का question paper होता है?
So Geeta.
Yeah, Geeta. So Geeta, what happens is, see when you are reading one question, one case study, I think that could be of, again forty divided by five is roughly around seven, eight pages, correct?
Yes sir.
So when you are studying the case study, first you look at the questions, okay? What are the questions asking about? Now, when you are reading the case study, when I was also taking through the case study last time, many of the facts were not relevant to the questions. But they were given in such a manner, but they were given in such a manner that I was putting a lot of emphasis on the, on those points only, even I was making a mistake. So first you have to see at the questions and see what the question is trying to exactly ask about. Some of the questions may be asking some plain vanilla answers from you. Some of the questions may be asking some plain vanilla answers from you, where case study might not be relevant also. Now, when you are studying case study, before reading the ques- uh before. Reading the case study, if you are reading the questions, then you are able to see what question is exactly asking about. So, you read only the relevant points.
Yes, sir.
So that will save your time, that will give you confidence also, that will save your energy also.
Yes, sir.
So for this, you have to have reading habits. So how do we develop reading habits? We develop reading habits through reading newspapers, physical newspapers, not the uh smartphone articles. But reading physical newspaper helps a lot. So, this ka bhi agar. Uh December me, eh sorry, January me exam se, I request. You ever reading a bit of newspaper at least fifteen, twenty minutes a day, then you will be able to read faster. And then you will not find reading forty pages would be difficult. Now, who is going to say that reading newspaper will take fifteen minutes of a day, fifteen minutes of a day and I, I'm not going to do that?
Yes, sir, reading, but Gujarati newspaper is reading.
Sorry?
I'm reading every day, but Gujarati newspaper I'm reading.
And you're writing answers in?
In English.
So you should now move on to good uh English for a while.
Yeah, definitely.
And I don't mean that when you are reading newspapers also or reading the case studies, you have to read. Uh ho sakta aap aankho se English me padh raha hoon, but uh when you are reading in your mind or when you are. Uh thinking about, you can think in Hindi, Gujarati, Marathi, Maharashtrian, uh Kannad, wherever, whichever language you are comfortable at.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I hope uh you, students are able to understand what I am trying to say. Jab aap English me padh bhi raha hoon, English, alphabets se, English letters se, but aap jab dimag me soch raha hoon, aap. Hindi me soch chakte hoo, Gujarati me soch chakte hoo, whichever is the most convenient language for you. So that gives a comfort zone between you and the question paper. I think that helps a lot, yes? So there are small, small things that helps a lot in CA final exams. So CA is a mental teaser, CA is a like a cricket tournament where you have to. Be flexible. Aapko kya pasand hai, aapko kya, what is your strong point, you have to find it out, discover yourself. My strong point, my, my strength could be weakness for you, your weakness could be strength for me, yes?
Yes, sir.
We should not see that Rajesh is being doing like this, then I also should that, should do that only. But whatever I'm giving you the uh tips and ideas, they are the general habits, like reading newspaper, reading uh between the lines. Not going very much deeply in the case studies, first reading the questions, what they are asking about. So Jatin has asked about how to approach IBS paper in exam and how to prepare for IBS. So I was, I, I did give some insights and maybe in the next two, two and a half hours, my job is to give insights on this only, so please stay tuned. Sir, how to assess much, how much answer will be sufficient for theory questions? Agula, can you please give me an example? What are you trying to say? Okay, so let me uh take you through this case study which has been given to me relevant to pharmaceutical industry. So, uh you also had been circulated those case studies, yes? So I'm going to share a screen on my Zoom. Are you able to see this uh case study?
Yes, sir.
An excerpt two case of return of expired medicines and obvious. So, was this case study uh seen or read by someone earlier? My first question.
Sir, from where do we get this case study?
You have to log into ICA dot RG and download the students' journal.
Okay.
No worries, I'm also seeing the case study for the first time, though ICA had sent me a couple of days back, but I was not able to see, I just went through a glance. To see what is the case study about and I got to know that it is about some pharmaceutical industry talking about index. Sixteen index thirty-eight index twenty, talking about some expired medicines. Yes, Kitan, if you want to speak something, then you can um uh speak in the question answer session also, or if it is something important, you can. Please unmute yourself and tell now.
Ah, sir, uh good evening, sir.
Yeah, good evening.
Sir, actually, the. Main like the. Is my paper. Chod ja rahe, matab maximum seventy mark tak likha rahe hoon, sir. In sign, I'm only group to special student. And that to us me group one ka abhi portion jada hai, sir. Matab FM ka, audit ka, FR ka. What three subjects mila ke lagba ka more than fifty marks, fifty marks kuch hai, sir. So, hum log group two students ke liye bahut dikkat ho raha, sir. To us me DT ka or IDT ka thoda weighted ja, thoda baada deya to acha rata hai. Matab mera. Per paper bhi jada fast nahi likha rahe hoon, sir. Woh yeh dikkat hai, sir. Abhi result me mera one point four aaya tha, aggregate me gaya tha, fifty, fifty-one, forty-four, one, forty-five aaya. To vahi kaisa fast likhna hai, question ko kaisa aapka chhona hai, matab jada se jada fast kaisa likhna hai. Or ek uh in city the group to subject, so DT or IDT ka weighted thoda, or thoda das mark tak bala na chahe, sir. Kune, abhi mera to, thik hai, mera chod da, abhi group hai, lekin na, do, three saal pehle, jo log. Group one player kar diye, un log ko bahut dikkat ho rana, sir.
Okay, apni kothai dikein?
Sir?
Apni kothai dikein?
I'm not able to.
You are from Bengal, yes, we are from. Apni kothai dikein?
No, no, I'm from Odisha.
Oh, okay, sorry, you are from Odisha, because I saw that you are ERO and, okay.
Ah, yes, sir.
Which place Odisha?
Odisha, Koraput, sir, Koraput.
Okay, can you see the Excel file now on the screen? And this is for everyone, okay, not for the name.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'm able to see.
See, there are one, I think two hundred forty minutes, yes, sorry, I'm wrong.
Yes, sir, two forty minutes.
Two minutes. So Kiran, as you were mentioning. That you are only able to appear for seventy, seventy-five, eighty marks. Uh so, I, I just wanted to ask, do you know the entire hundred marks uh question paper?
No, sir, no, no, no.
No? Apart from leaving one optional question, there are ten, twenty marks which uh might be difficult for everyone, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, difficult, of course it is difficult, sir.
Yes.
If, if at all I want to write, I can't write because of, like, I'm not able to, like, write, I'm not able to complete the paper within my time. Even that is whether that extra eight, twenty-five marks, I know, or the, I don't know that. I know, first of all, I'm able to only write seventy-five marks, maximum to maximum.
See, I have mentioned two scenarios, okay? And let me talk about IBS also and let, let me talk about other papers also. Where the time allowed is only one eighty minutes. See, in, when we talk about IBS paper. When you are mentally prepared that you are going to appear only eighty-five marks, okay? Due to time issues or maybe due to uh some tough questions and all, so you are having. Zero point four two minutes extra per mark and generally. Uh one question carries four marks, yes, minimum four marks.
Ah, yes, sir.
Correct? So you are getting roughly around two minutes more for one four marks question. And when you are giving two minutes more for one four marks question, then you can read question one more time.
Yes, sir.
In thirty seconds, what you are going to write. So that only writing is not enough, yes? Writing the right answer and what is being asked, that is more important, yes? Sometimes what we do is, out of excitement or out of uh hariness, we write whatever. It comes to the mind first, yes? But that is not necessary that the question is asking the same thing. So do not focus more on attempting and attempting, focus more on quality attempt. And when we know that we are only about to appear for eighty-five, ninety marks and ten marks ka question is a hota hai ki jo. Time is choose ke chalte, complete nahi ho patti hai ya, sometimes questions are very tough, sometimes ki always the questions are tough. So that ten fifteen minutes, ten fifteen minutes mark, isse bhi chhut jata hai. So, why don't you follow this strategy? Aap jab, abhi se padhai kar raha hoon, ya jab exam dena ja raha hoon, to aap mentally prepare ho ke jao ke nahi. Mera eighty, eighty-five bhi attempt hone ka hai, taaki when you write paper also, see, I'll give you an example. Char bhai ke, thik hai?
Yes.
You are sitting in the, see, examination hall and you have already done fifty-five marks, say suppose.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And now within one hour, you are supposed to write forty-five marks, then there is a panic situation.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Know that, yes, you are only to write now eighty-five minus fifty-five, thirty minutes, thirty marks in one hour, then you are not panicked.
Yes, sir.
To just to avoid that panic situation also. You should change your strategy, everyone should change their strategy, what is more important? Attempting is more impo- uh important or obtaining the max is more important?
Obtaining mark is important.
Correct. So we should be quite flexible.
To matab isme, for example, per, per mark two point five isar, average four mark a question, lagba. Approximately nine point six, matab ten minutes ka, ek question hai. Agar vo ten minutes me mera question nahi hua, to vay question chhod ke main next question chale jaun, vo question continue karu, sir.
Coming that, to that, if you are writing on flow, then please do not leave. But you are getting stuck up in a concept or you are getting stuck, stuck up in a calculation. And if you have written all the uh writing notes and the process notes, step or sab aapne kiya hai. To aapko agar lag raha hai ki this question is unnecessarily taking much time, then you can move on to the next question, because ICA gives a lot of step marking.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Vahi mera, abhi DT, DT ke, IDT ke andar vahi hua tha, sir.
Lot of working notes, we do not write, we do not, we do not write about. Hum log ko lagta hai ki, arre, yar, H R E exemption, maine man me calculate kar liya, lower of the following hai, uska working note ki kya banau main? Math ka calculation main kyun dihaun usme, section hundred and fifteen B double A me opt kiya hai, company ne, ab main kyun likhne jaun? Math ka calculation hi nahi karu, but aapko likh ke to aana chahiye, since the company has opted for new taxationism, the provisions of section. Hundred and fifteen JB are not applicable to the company.
Yes, yes.
Per check kar raha hai, at least usko padhata padega, the student is serious and he knows about it, he or she knows about it. That carries a lot of step marking. And DT, I'll tell you, one, I'll, I'll tell you one more thing, maybe there is a question of PGPPS, ten adjustments are given. And you know thoroughly eight adjustments, you are not sure about one adjustment.
Yes, sir.
So, one adjustment ke chalte, aap apna dimag. Ko kharaap karne se better, aat adjustment ko then better se present kar gaya ho.
Next question, chale jaun. Vahi, sir.
Or usko samajh, or ek samajh me nahi aata, to usko skip kar dena, chuk ke se.
Thik hai, thik hai.
Instead of doing the blunder.
Yes, sir, sir.
Correct?
Isme time, time me chale ja rahe, isme, ansar to nahi aata, time with.
And article ship is very, very important for DT, IDT, you have to really correlate what you did in an article ship.
Yes, sir.
So article ship also plays a very important role, when you are writing the papers or when you are preparing for the exams, you can remember what your clients were doing. Or what your seniors were doing.
Yes.
But iska matab yeh nahi hai ki, fir se aap article ship, me kya hua tha, nahi hua tha, vo client ke saath me touch base me ajaun. Ya vo senior ke saath me time spend karne lag jaun, because that takes a lot of time then, and time is very precious, yes? So I hope this Excel is clear to everyone, I think if students require, then they can take a screenshot of this also, if it is.
Yes, sir, sir, one more question, isko add karana cha raha hoon, sir, please, give me one minute, please.
Okay, this I need to take now through the study, yes?
Yes, sir, please, just give me one minute. Sir, aur ek cheeze, generally, me, like, I have seen many students recording me. Like their written speed is very slow, sir. Uh can you give some solutions so that we can maintain a same, same pace of speed from the beginning? Speed writing, okay?
You have to practice writing for that.
Okay, sir. Matab, jab hum log question practice kar chena, tab ek time, time, timer set karke, karna hai, kaise set karna hai?
Nothing, 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 don't make it very tough, when you are reading, yes? So aapke paas me book ek copy hai, to jab aap padhai kar raha hoon, ek pen bhi le liya karwahat me, aur likhte jana. It doesn't take extra time also, the moment aapka aankh se aap question answer padh raha hoon, books padh raha hoon, usi time me aap. Uh A four no, a paper me ya ek rough copy me, aap likhte jaun.
Thik hai, thik hai.
Don't, don't keep your uh hands not walking. Okay?
Thank you, thank you for our support, sir.
Yes, now let me go through this case study. I'm also feeling very nervous looking at this very big case study as you were telling that the case study is of seven pages, eight pages, it's long. So, within ten seconds or twenty seconds, what are you, are you getting any clue what is this about, this case study is about? This case, looking at just twenty seconds, I'm getting a clue that this case study is about a pharmaceutical company. Because the pharmaceutical company is written in the very first line, yes? And it is something about stock and it is something about GST also. And it is something about management as well as, it is something about reading, avoiding inefficiencies, reading, reducing cost, yes? Three, four small things I have been able to get, just looking at ten, twenty seconds. So let me now take some more time, how to analyze the case study. Obviously, this much time should not be given during the examination time, but maybe during the preparation time, you may give such time, okay? So there are, there is a brief write-up of two, three paragraphs, after that, three annexes are given, site annex one. Annex two. Annex three, so annex one is about. Impact of demand variability on supply chain management, so it is about uh demand, demand and. Uh supply management, something related to procurement of vendors and something, procurement of raw materials and something related to, I think. Supply of finished goods as well as maintaining logistics arrangement. Something related to procurement of vendors and something, procurement of raw materials and something related to, I think, supply of finished goods as well as maintaining logistics arrangement. Annex two is about case of return of expired medicines, so maybe the company had sold some medicines to uh distributors or retailers. And as you all know that every medicine comes with expiry date, so expiry, expired medicines, what should I do? I have to bring it back because if expired medicines are sold in the store, the brand reputation will be concerned. And it would create negative impact in the health of the people as well, yes? So annex three is about suspected fraud in revenue reporting, so see, the suspected fraud. As soon as you hear about fraud, you should remember S A two forty. Auditor's responsibilities relating to fraud in an audit of financial statements, you should think about section four forty-seven, which talks about wrongful gain or wrongful loss. You should think about section hundred and forty-three twelve, that talks about reporting of frauds by statutory auditors to the central government. Informative four, you should think about C R O, I think, was number ten. Which talks about reporting of any cases of fraud, done by the company or done on the company by the statutory auditors, correct? So you should quickly come to mind, I think Iran or Nia something, someone was asking how to remember those things. So you should be very smart enough or your brain should be. Kept in such manner that even if you have fraud or any particular thing, then you will feel three, four things connected. So it is one by one, it is not happening, as I was speaking, I told about the first thing. Second thing, my mind automatically came, but if once, I thought about it, that after a term, a terminology about me, first four things already should be in my mind. Then it cannot be. Then it will come one by one, might be I was taking five or ten seconds, maybe you take more twenty seconds. Because I come with a little experience, with a little more experience, correct? But once, there are not three things, you have to think about it one by one. But if you are thinking, if you are thinking continuously, if you are maintaining rhythm, definitely it will come. So this was about reading techniques, so that you get a familiarity zone. Today, if you have already gone to a temple or maybe if you have already gone to a. Movie theater and that is quite familiar to you. Or if you assume Bombay, Kandivali is going to go, and if you have not been to Kandivali yet today. Or Bombay, you are not going to go, and you have not been to it yet today, and if you are going to go tomorrow. Then if you sleep at night, you will feel in mind, yes? I do not know which metro to go from, which left and right to go, so there are some troubles in your mind, yes? But if you have already been to those, that place a few times, then it will not remain trouble in your mind. We should make that case study familiar to us, just looking at it. Case study three is about fraud and revenue reporting, whenever it comes to revenue reporting, you have to remember indices one on five or maybe A S nine. Or maybe G S T impact also, maybe income tax impact also, because more the revenue, more the income tax, more the revenue, more the G S T. Correct? And revenue link is where, where is it? Cost is also there, if we do not do cost, revenue will not come, correct? So there are a lot of interlinking factors. And as you know, when revenue comes, everything is objective, increase revenue, correct? So we have to bring small, small things, all things together in our mind when we look at a keyword of the case study. Correct? So now what are the questions? Let's see the questions very briefly, quickly, so that when we read the case study, we are able to determine what is relevant and what is not relevant for us. So the case, question number one is the board of directors wish to understand the various activities carried out at Y B L in order, in order to gain insights on how they can be improved. To create better value for customers, evaluate the broad set of activities and develop Michael Porter's value chain analysis for. Y B L. So this is a quite technical question, so you should first know what is Michael Porter's value chain. Anyone who has heard about this earlier?
Yes, sir, primary activities, secondary support activities are put.
Can you give me an example, please, to make me understand?
Uh and primary activities inbound logistics procurement, no procurement will outbound logistics, infrastructure. Support activity and mixed it up.
See, so I will just give an example, so what does it mean that? There are two kind of activities involved in a creation or delivery of a product or a service. Okay, one is primary activities, another is support activities, correct? So like, let's talk about article ship, a C A firm, the primary activities, what is it? Bringing the client, working on the client. Uh try uh. Preparing the audit report, reviewing the financial activities, whatever our article assistants do, they are primary activities, correct?
So for services only secondary support activities are there, not primary activities.
For services also, there would be primary activities, yes? Like if you talk about a typical C A firm or maybe if you talk about a K P O industry, software industry. So the software industry does not deal with anything with the uh product, but for a software industry, what are the primary activities? That coding is the primary activity, the human resource who is involved into the I T is the primary activity. For a C A firm, maybe if that is not involved into technology functions or technology service not given, then it can be, that I T main. That service and that C A firm is the only one or two persons in, in the I T people in the C A firm might be a supportive service. But for a, but for a company like Infosys, V Pro, all the I T persons are their primary functions. Maybe for a manufacturing company, the finance department is a supportive function. But for a C A firm, the finance department or the accounts department is a primary function. Because that finance department or the accounts department or the audit department is providing its services to its end customers. So like when you talk about supportive activities, uh there are H R function, there are uh infrastructure. There are some trainings and R and Ds and all going on, that is known as. Support function, so what is this asking about is? Now, the board of directors of this company wants to understand what are the activities going on so that um. Value can be created with much more improvements for the customers. So now they are asking, now you write the set of activities and develop Michael Porter's value chain analysis. So this, I just wanted to understand this Michael Porter's value chain analysis uh is being, is being dealt in any other of the paper of the C A final?
Yes, sir, uh S C M P is there, sir.
S P O M is called.
Yes, Form K paper is there.
So that is why remembering or recalling the what you have learned in the last one or two attempts or maybe in the last. In other papers are very, very equally important because uh maybe, for me, I did not know Michael Porter's value chain analysis, what is it? So I kept thinking that Michael Porter's value chain analysis, whether it is or not, Michael is, Michael Clarke is the name of a cricketer, yes?
Yes, sir, but this is studies, sir, this is question, we know that Michael Porter's five processes. But this case study, read it and link it, how to write it?
Okay, you, now you tell me what are the theoreticals, then I will help you connect with the practical thing, okay? Just give me two minutes, let me see other question, okay?
Yes, sir.
I think Geeta is speaking, yes, or who, who was on the audio now?
Yes, sir, Geeta, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Geeta, you keep on telling me, I will keep on correlating the things. I think Megha has also written something on the chat box. Okay, strategic cost management. So the, what is the next question about? The next question is about. Sales written. By four different stockists, so for this, which was important, annex number two was very, very important for us, given in the question, correct? And they have also asked about the impact of G S T, impact of input tax credit. And they have given four scenario, sorry, we have to give these four, four scenarios, these are the part of the answer. And. There are M C Qs also, M C Q one is about the G S T, M C Q two is about. Possible solutions that the different heads of department offer to Moan Girii. Moan Girii is the chief operating official, so you must pay attention to that, that question is on your hot seat. M C Q three is about some calculation, balance sheet, cost, I think C F O, what should be the value of intangible asset? So it is about intangible asset recognition, about numbers are already given here, so I think this has nothing much to do with the case study. So you have to ask the question and take the answer from here, correct? M C Q four is about. Some fraud conducted by an employee, so which of the followings are? So you see, I was talking about one forty-three twelve, I was talking about reporting to the board and this disclosure in board report and all. So that is being talked about. M C Q five is about. Termination of employment of. Reshma Pathak and Nirav Zen. So they are also outline for you. So now, I think we have got a brief understanding about the case study, just looking at three, four minutes. One is that is a pharmaceutical company and there are a lot of activities going on uh to for, in the form of Michael Portal activities. And questions are being asked about G S T, on the G S T treatment, on the sales return, on the, on its effect in the input tax credit. And questions are also asked about fraudulent reporting, fraudulent practices, what should I do, and the M C Qs are about. Moan Girii and. Some case study on recognition of intangible asset, something on. Regarding to employment of Reshma Pathak and Nirav Zen. So I hope you have got a brief idea, just looking at the top to bottom of the case study, correct? And how much time should this take? Now, let's go through the yesterday. See here, Vitality Limited is the name of the company and it is a large pharmaceutical company headquartered in Hyderabad. With manufacturing facilities, so it is doing the manufacturing also. In Telangana and Andhra Pradesh. So they are typically having manufacturing facilities in two states, so that becomes a multi-state. Now operates in a region with a thriving pharmaceutical ecosystem. This locational advantage, so that is why it is having a locational advance, advantage since it is near to ports. And also having a lot of I T resources in Hyderabad, provides access to suppliers, skilled manpower and infrastructure. Okay, so these three things are very important, one suppliers, skilled manpower and three infrastructure. The company undertakes complex interconnected activities to deliver medicines safely and on time and Michael Porter's value chain analysis offers. Valuable insights to this synergies, oh my god, I was not aware that question itself is talking about Michael Porter's value chain analysis. So Geeta, can you tell me, we have read three, four lines, now you can tell me what are the Michael Porter's value generalizes? Is your primary activities, support activities?
Uh sir, primary activities, it is inbound logistics, outbound logistics.
Correct, absolutely.
Operation, operations, means it is. Worker. Fifth, fourth, fifth, not answer.
I think infrastructure is a.
Uh support. Yeah, support activities, infrastructure, procurement, uh human resource management. And last fourth one, I don't know.
The technology development, correct? So now your first question is sorted out, I think. Now, when you have read about three, four lines or four, five lines or maybe six, seven lines and if you are able to get some clue. Related to some question, you have to start writing about that question. Do not think or do not wait for completing the entire case study, hope you got my point?
Yes, sir, yes.
And always, when you are writing in a question, in your answer sheet, say suppose you had four or five questions over there, yes? Always write only one answer in a single page.
Okay.
Say, in the middle of the page, you write. Say suppose this is the answer sheet. This is answer. Two. One. A. Now in the next page of the answer sheet, you write, it is answer two one B. So with this, what will happen is when your evaluator is checking the paper, he becomes clear that. This page is particularly having answer only for one A and once he reads and he finds that the answer is appropriate. Then he gives marks also accordingly to, to that, sometimes what we do is we write one A, one B, one C, one D in a single page. And it might be a situation where the evaluator forgets marks for one B and only gives marks for one A or one C. Understood, got my point?
Yes, sir.
What about others? Yes, sir, got it, thank you very much for getting it. Now, I think question number uh one is quite sorted out, yes, for you?
Yes, sir.
Now, let's go ahead, so the moment you find answer, please go and write in different, different pages. One A, one B, one C, two A, two C, two E, write it in that time. Otherwise you will find lack of time, otherwise you will forget the first four things by the end, you are, you have reached the case study. Because here everything is mixed up, yes, income tax, G S T, fraudulent reporting, revenue recognition, capital budgeting, everything is mixed up. So if you continue to study, then five, six things will come with you, then we end up losing control, correct? Hello.
Yes sir.
Yes, like while you are doing article ship, you must have done audits, yes? And audit में normally पांच, से component होता है। Assets होते, liability होते, income होते, expenses होते, notes to financial statement होते, cash flow होता है। आप दो दिन तक खाली देखते रहोगे, देखते रहोगे, देखते रहोगे, client का document और आप कुछ recording नहीं करोगे और आप asset liability करके उसको link up नहीं करते रहोगे। So, after two days, when your partner says or when your manager says, where is the financial statement, will you be able to prepare in the next one day? No, but since right from the first hour itself, if you are arranging the things in such a way. That this is my asset, this is my liability, अगर आप trial balance को जाके वैसे decorate कर रहे हो, ये मेरा asset का part है, ये मेरा liability का part है, तो आपको grouping करने में भी easy होता है, financial statements बनाने में भी easy होता होगा, correct?
Yes sir.
So, वैसे ही, when you are reading the case study, you have to note it down and you have to start writing answers in your answer sheet. Again I repeat and I ask, not to Geeta but someone else, will you wait till the end? To, for the case study to complete and then, and then write the answers or will you start writing in between? What do you feel should be the great idea? Megha is mentioning that, okay, start writing. What about Atanu Mandal? Just because I am saying that, we should write, you are saying that we will write or which one is a better idea? This could be a nice idea. Thank you very much, Samya Nathanji. Okay, so now the case study highlights about the role of Mohan Giri. The Chief Operating Officer. आपको पता था ना, ये hotline में था, why? Because this, his role was being asked in our question, correct? So, what he does, let's read in a minute. Who leverages feedback from CFA's and stockist to address downstream supply chain issues? A recurring challenge arises from mismatches between demand and production, especially for products with limited self-life. So, what is the role of Mohan Giri, what is he doing? He is looking at what demand is being given by the stockist and the CFA's, so that. The moment I get the demand, the moment I get the order from my retailers or from my wholesalers, I should be able to supply it. Say suppose a medicine, paracetamol का अभी demand ए रहा है, और मैं अगर paracetamol. Supply नहीं करके, मैं dyegene अगर supply करने लग जाऊं, तो काम चलेगा market में? We very simple and चीजों को practical बनाओ। Correct? नहीं चलेगा ना, so his role is to look at the supply chain issues. की क्या demand ए रहा है, क्या production हो रहा है और क्या supply हो रहा है, very, very simple. And what is the question saying? A recurring challenge arises between mismatches between demand and production, especially for products with limited self-life. So, there is a demand-supply mismatch. Say suppose there is a demand of apple, but the company is producing banana. Yeah, this is only given about pharmaceutical, but make it very, very simple. So, when you talk about, when you start talking about fruits. Fruits are also like medicines, correct? So, why don't you take fruits in example, instead of remembering or recalling the big names of the medicines? The information. Aspirin has at times triggered the bullwhip effect resulting in an expired inventory and non-value-added activities such as. Self certain documentation, regulatory compliance for destruction and GST related issues. So, what is this asymmetry known as? Maybe the acetrum is nothing but the information system or the information dashboard. The information system is highlighting a couple of instances, lot of instances of expired inventory. Non-value-added activities, so जब expired हो जाती inventory, तो मेरे को market से लेकर आना है, तो sales return करो, उसमें documentation करो, फिर उसका regulatory compliance भी होता है। फिर उसको destroy भी करना रहेगा, expired medicines को, फिर उसका GST का input का reversal, output का फिर से मैं दूसरा सामान भेजूंगा उसको, lot of issues, yes? So, what do you feel? The objective of any pharmaceutical industry would be to reduce sales return, correct? Yes. So, these processes consume significant resources and increase cost. Obviously, this is a unnecessary cost, this is an available cost. If you are able to maintain good relationship in the market with your customers. And if you are able to supply the right quantity at right time, then there would not be any expired medicines and all, correct? Hence, management must focus on minimizing such inefficiencies. While seeking opportunities to sustain fronts, to sustain profits. Value chain and supply chain analysis. Remain vital tools in building flexibility and agility. So, that's why value chain and supply chain are very, very important to maintain efficiency. So, now what was the question regarding Mr. Giri, Mohan Giri, let's go to the question once. You have read one paragraph, that paragraph is about to complete. So, let us see whether we would be getting the answer of Mohan Giri. From the portion which we have studied till now. Referring to NXR one, which of the following can be possible solution that different heads of departments offer to Mohan Giri? So, it is saying that you have to refer to NXR one, so we haven't come to NXR one, so let's go back. Maybe while I am in computer, while you are also viewing my screen, it might take a lot of time from going from bottom to down, but in exams, when you are writing. Or when you are given the physical copies, it would not take much time, correct? So, please do not worry about the time I have spent here, I am about to spend about two and a half hour for this case study. That doesn't mean that you also have to give at least one hour for this case study during the exams. Hope I am clear? Yes, thank you. So now let's read the other paragraph. Operating under competitive pressures also bring ethical challenges. Is this correct? When you are filing the tax audit report on the last day and you have ten tax audit reports to file that day, then you also leave the small, small things, yes, correct? But when you are fifteen days away from a tax audit report filing, then you keep on looking at every minute, minute things, correct?
Yes sir.
Yes, so there is a risk of employee fraud, including revenue misreporting. So, when your company or when your pharmaceutical company is having a lot of operational inefficiencies. So, maybe the employees just to maintain their incentives, just to maintain their bonus and their profit, they might. Do something hanky panky with the revenue. Is a critical concern, the question itself says that the risk of employee fraud and revenue misreporting is a critical concern for this company. Even senior management may engage in such practices, very true. The case study examines the auditor's role in recognizing this risk, especially when management withholds information. So, management is not going to give you easy information. Has anyone done any kind of audit? Where management came to you and told that, अरे, this were the mistakes which I have done, now please put into your observation seat or point of attention? No, yes, so that is why you as an advisor or a consultant or auditor to this company, you have to critically examine. It also considers the procedures under the Company Jack two thousand thirteen for dealing with the fraud and terminating employees involved in misconduct. So, in summary, by understanding how each activity adds value, YBL can avoid inefficiencies, reduce costs and optimize operations and enhance customer satisfaction. Simultaneously, robust performance management and ethical safeguards are also essential to prevent fraudulent behavior and protect shareholder interest. See, now looking at this last paragraph itself, it doesn't make much relevance to the case study, correct? It is not giving any new information, these things were already known to you. Correct? The, the thing which I have highlighted, is there anything new in this paragraph? No, so that does not hold much relevance, so you have to understand, so while you are writing or with pencil marks, you have to draw lines. Underline it or maybe circle the words, so that when you write the case study. You, your concentration is on those words or your concentration is on those provisions. Okay? So now let's study NXR one, because NXR one was important for that question itself. And the question is also very simple, they itself says that referring to NXR one. So, you should thank the ICI. So, Mohan Giri was the Chief Operating Officer, now he has written a mail to Reshma Pathak and Harikumar. Tez Prakash and Nirav Jain, four are the employees, because you can see all the email domains are ybl.com, ybl.com, correct? And YV, and he has marked CC to YV Giri, so I think YV Giri is the most senior person of all these four persons, that way, that is how he has marked CC to him, correct? So, this I think email-related procedures, you are aware about evaluating article ship. So, what it says is, subject. Impact of demand variability on supply chain management, dear Reshma, Hari and Tez. So, I think Nirav is not addressed now. Let us take the case of Vita, Vita, Vita Rich Health Supplement Tablets, कोई vitamin की बात हो रही है. Which is a general vitamins supplement that can be bought over the counter by any user from a pharmacy. During our annual forecasting exercise, we take inputs from sales in the past year, obviously this is also known fact. When you are forecasting your sales, what do you do is you look at a past year sales, correct? You take input from your stockist and CFA's for information about expected market trends in future, nothing great given, correct till now? On this email. Based on this, we determine our sales forecast for the tablets which in turn determines the production level, so this is also very known thing that based on the. So, first you do budget forecasting, you prepare budgeted sales and then you prepare budgeted production. Which one is budgeted first, sales or production?
Production sir.
Production? So, this is the production, you will determine your sales and basis of sales, you will determine your production.
Okay, yes, yes, sales, sales.
Just, आप simple सोचो।
हाँ, forecast पहले sales होगा, उसके बाद तो production होगा, हाँ।
आज आपका एक छोटा सा दुकान है, आपको पता है, मेरा दुकान में दस packet bread बिकने वाले हैं आज। तो आप दस packet अगर order करोगे ना? मंगाने के लिए हो सकता है, you might be having the bandwidth to order hundred packets of bread. So.
पहले sales forecast होगा।
हाँ, so I am, I am just, I am, why, why am I giving such stupid examples? It might sound stupid also, it is sounding stupid to me as well, but to make the things clear. So that, when you are writing papers or when you are preparing for those case studies, you need not think very, very. Deep, एकदम simple सा example को सोच के आगे बढ़ोगे ना, तो आगे बढ़ सकते हो। Understood?
Yes sir.
So, what is? Mr. Mohan saying, until date, until date मतलब अभी तक, our forecast based on the ever exercise was reasonably accurate. मतलब अभी तक हम लोग equality चल रहे थे इस basis में। अभी तक it was reasonably accurate only. Suddenly, the months from November twenty-four to January two thousand twenty-five, there was a spike in demand for Vita Rich, so Vita Rich is nothing but the name of the product, correct? This was triggered by special discount schemes that retailers pharmacies in certain areas offered in order to popularize this product and increase the sales. So, Vita Rich एक vitamin था, तो उनके retailers ने कोई special discount scheme दिया होगा, तो उसका. Sales ऊपर चला गया during the month of November twenty-four to January two thousand twenty-five, correct? So, why, why am I translating it to Hindi? Because Hindi is quite comfortable to me, English might not be that comfortable to me. So, as I mentioned earlier, you should also translate those information given in the case study. On the language which you are comfortable, so that you remember for a quite longer time. अगर मैं English में बोलते जाऊं, तो हो सकता है आपका memory में वो नहीं जाए, until unless you are putting lot of concentration efforts, correct? But the moment I speak in Hindi about this study, then आपका दिमाग में जल्दी घुस जाता है, है? Okay, so maybe I think I should. Come to your place and learn some language. So, maybe if you are comfortable with Kannada, Tamil and you can also think on that language. So, while I am speaking on Hindi, you please think in a regional language, in your mother tongue. Okay, Mr. Samya Nathan? So, what the case study talked about is, yes, please, thank you. That during the month of January, November two thousand twenty-four to January two thousand twenty-five, that is three months, since the retailers gave discount to their customers on the Vita Rich product, then there was a. Increase in sales. As the demand picked up, they started placing bulk orders with the wholesalers. So, what happens is, in a retail, in a pharmaceutical industry or anything, there are retailers, correct? And there is a factory. Does this factory sell to retailer directly? No, so there are some wholesalers, some stockists over here. So, as the demand picked up, they started placing bulk orders with wholesalers who did not have sufficient stock to meet the sudden bulk orders. So, their sales was increasing at the retailer's side and they started placing more orders, but they were not having enough stock, correct? Due to this, the production of Vita Rich increased more than the twice the projected numbers for twenty-four, twenty-five, that is how. The production had to increase, because my sales was increasing, so I had to increase the production. However, once the discount scheme period got over in January two thousand twenty-five, the customer demanded. Demand started tapering and reached regular levels thereafter. But January two thousand twenty-five के बाद में, since the discount scheme was not given to the end customers over here. The demand became regular, the sale became regular. Correct, ultimately inside it was found that this spike was driven more by the discount scheme that was temporary in nature. Rather than an actual sustainable demand for the product. So, what is this line saying is? The increase in demand was just due to the demand, due to the discount factor only, it was not due to the product factor. See, in case studies, there are some words given in such a manner that. Might give uncomfort to you, like this word, does this have any relevance in this line? Many of you might not have heard about this word earlier or might found this complex word earlier. And might, it might be such that the moment you see this word, then you are worried or. Curious to know what is it about, but this word does not have any much relevance, so you have to be very clear. की ये छोटे-छोटे tricky चीजों से आपको तकलीफ नहीं होनी चाहिए। Correct? Unfortunately, large numbers of Vita Rich tablets that we produced in excess in anticipation of sustained future demand remained unsold, so there is a twist. January, there were sales, but February and March, there was not much sales, but they produced in large numbers. That is why during the March, at the year end, there have been inventory lying unsold. As pharmaceutical companies. We need not carry Samya Nathan. Why, why is it necessary to carry dictionary? Because that word does not have any relevance only. As pharmaceutical companies, we have a product portfolio that has limited shelf life. Obviously, anyone knows that, everyone knows that medicines do have a limited expiry life. Some medicines are so much. some medicines are so much quickly expiring that they have only a life of one week some might be having of twelve months some might be having of twenty four months but that is none of our concern to the case study as per company's policy that is in line with the current industry practices our agreement with the stockist allow them to return medicines that are within three months of expiry Vita Rich tablets have an expiry of five months from the date of manufacturing this year almost thirty percent of our initials initial sales volume of Vita Rich tablets to the stock is tabbed written either past their expiry or those that are within three months of expiry as per the regulations we need to destroy the expired goods in a leaf safe manner so as to prevent any public health hazard so what is this practice parading about that there is a industry based practice that says that medicines can be returned within three months of expiry so Vita is these tablets have an expiry of five months from date of manufacturing so almost thirty percent of the sales were returned after they have been expired or before expiry of before three months of expiry so you can see the inefficiency which was talked in the first paragraph that due to this uh return and all there are some inefficiencies and all so what is this you can tell like we were talking here yes I violated you on the screen are you able to see so we should be able to correlate in such a way that thirty percent of sales is coming as sales return so that's a serious issue I think till now not just this in anticipation in anticipation of growth in future demand our raw material team procured the compounds needed to manufacture this medicine in large quantities in the month of November and December two thousand twenty four however once the discount scheme got period this scheme discount scheme period got over in January two thousand twenty five the customer demand started tapering therefore the production levels of these tablets also reduced to time therefore the extra stock of raw materials that were procured especially for Vita Rich have remained unused so there is more production also and there was low sales in comparison to December and January in February in March so there was a large stock of finished goods also and maybe since the production was increasing the raw material quantity was also being purchased in a bulk quantity so the raw materials were also lying unused as an thirty first March and every one of you know that thirty first March is the closing year for almost every entity correct this pattern of medicine of demand variability on inventory has been noticed in few other medicines as well as managers of marketing and sales and products and procurement you are collectively responsible for this unnecessary production please let me know how can we collectively resolve such issues so who what is this in communication about now this communication is from the chief operating officer to the sales department production and procurement department now you have got it now he is asking now he has written about the problem now he is asking telling his team members that how this can be collectively resolved so a problem in an organization cannot be resolved independently or uh in isolation there has to be a coordination amongst various departments correct so thanks Moan Giri now let's go to the question again which was talking about Moan Giri can someone read the question M C Q two referring to an extra one which of the following can be possible solution that the different aids of departments offer to Moan the C E O expand the coverage of stockist and C F S from who inputs are being are taken during the preparation of the annual sales forecast improve Y B L's capability of responding to changing customer demand by building agility in its operation that can quickly scale up or down to meet customer demands educate various parties involved in the supply chain like pharmacist stockist and C F S about impact of demand variations on supply chain management encourage stockist to place bulk orders at their discretion in order so that it is possible to forecast the sales better so now what is it asking which options are could be possible solutions that the different heads of department offer to Moan so do you think the fourth one is correct one could be a solution what is it saying aap apne stockist ko bologe aap bulk order place karo aap apna discussion ke hisaab se so that we will be able to forecast the sales better so what will happen if they place the bulk orders and if there is no any sales in the market then after five months or after three months that will be coming as a sales return so that is another big attack so this could not be a solution correct
yes sir they are returning the goods frequently the more than thirty percentage of goods it's returning within three months it is a problem
it's saying you go and tell the stockist here pharmacies to place more and more orders so that they will be able to forecast the sales better so that is a problem again creating another big problem correct educate various parties involved in the supply chain like the pharmacist stockist and the C F S about impact of demand variations on supply chain management this could be a solution yes if you are going to a pharmacist stockist and telling that see uh whenever there is a demand variation then that impacts the supply chain management because you people start ordering more without telling us that you are given you are given a discount scheme so what is the problem here this company was not knowing that the retailers have given one demand is discount scheme to their customers like say suppose if I go to a pharmacist shop and I tell that there are two vitamins of vitamin A one is vitamin A one and vitamin A two and if you buy vitamin A two we are giving you ten percent discount on the M R P and if you are buying vitamin A one you are not getting any discount but the work of both the medicines are same then what do you do as a customer you buy vitamin A two correct so in that November December January vitamin A one A two ka sale padh gaya upar chala gaya but the moment you reduce the discount then it went down so the company was not knowing that what did the company do November January me jaise jaise sales padh raha tha usne apna production vaise badhate gaya raw materials karjana badhate gaya so educating could be a solution correct number two what it says is improve Y B L's capability of responding to changing customer demand by building agility in operations that can quickly scale up or down so that is very very important the company should be capable enough to know when to scale up when to scale down so the movement in the first week of February when the sales response was not that good it should have gone to the market and see and researched why the sales has gone down so that pura February and March me toh vo at least unnecessarily production nahi karta stock ko ekmuleet nahi karta so the sales and the demand and all everything should be tracked on a daily basis that means so this is a solution yes expand the coverage of stockist and C F S from who inputs are taken during the preparation of annual sales forecast so as we mentioned while we are discussing our case study on the basis of the sales we determine our production but how is the sales determined so sales is determined based on the discussion which some of the customers not the all customers it is not uh practically possible but the statement says that at least now you feel that your inputs are not that very important from a very few pila ab bhiis customers se baat kar rahe the at least forty forty customers se baat kar lo abhi aap forty stockist se baat kar lo that will help you to prepare a better plan correct so the option C first second and the third points could be the probable solutions and they have given the reason also though I am not going to the reason I just explain in my own words but you can see by expanding the coverage of stockist and C F S it will help to predict customer demand better and therefore can improve the sales forecast obviously that thing only I told in Hindi here it has been written in English in four lines improving the ability to respond quickly to customer demand will reduce will can contribute towards buildup of excess inventory within the supply chain solution three says that educating various parties involved can make them aware of the impact of what has happened so if such promotion events are planned they can inform the upstream supplier upstream supply means the one who is supplying them in advance in order to factor their sales forecast so maybe in the month of November when they introduced the discount scheme for the first time there was scarcity also in the market yes because November ka peela aapta first week me or second week me the movement the demand had increased there was no much production yes in the factory earlier maybe twenty thousand units were being produced every month in the November month when twenty thousand went to forty thousand so November ka first week and second week we are only having a little little production fifty percent production so solution number four why is it incorrect because the bulk order results in certain large rush orders leading to inventory pileup and leading to excess returns so though I took a lot of time in explaining this case study but if you read this uh M C Q two then you will be able to figure it out to some extent that what are the probable solutions what are not the probable solutions say suppose you have only twenty minutes left in the hand it is now five forty okay and you are oh two appear for this case study then at least you can write some of the answers without creating a panic situation that you have to read the entire case study correct maybe I think we should sorry I have not able to see the chat box so we take a break for five minutes and then we be back at eight twenty okay yes
yes sir
Blue whip effect, so blue whip effect is. Maybe the cause is very small, but the effect is very big, yes? The cause was very small in the sense that the discount given was to the customers was very small, maybe. The medicine would have been of rupees one thousand and the discount would have been of rupees hundred. But it has created such a big problem at the factory level or at the organizational level. So the problem has created a. The small problem has created a lot of another big problem that is how it is called blue whip effect. So now coming to an exit two. An exit two is the case of return of expired medicines. So it is a practical case study kind of thing. I may not be, and I think it is quite simple in language, this an exit two specifically, so I will not take line by line, but I'll just say that. So see this first line is not relevant for you. So you need not put a lot of pressure on your mind. Oh sorry, this is a different medicine, so that was a bitter reach and this is a biva life. And biva life has an expiry of nine months. So on expired the pharmacist or the stockist who hold the medicine in their inventory returned to the upstream supplier. What does this upstream means? Upstream means. Up. Who then eventually returns it to the manufacturer, that is the Y B L and as per regulations, Y B L is obliged to destroy them. Below are some of the details regarding the medicines written by the various stockist. So a case study, a practical sum has been given where. It has been mentioned that Y B L had applied, supplied some medicines to a health distributor. And a eagle distributor on twenty fifth of April and both returned the medicine, expired medicines on twenty fifth of. February two thousand twenty six, so you have to see that dates are very important. Because it is within the same financial year. Correct? Further, the medicines were supplied to J J Pharma distributors and K K Pharma distributors. And they are two separate distributors on first of July. With the expired stock being returned on twentieth September two thousand twenty six and twentieth December two thousand twenty six. So in the first case, it was within the same financial year, in the second case, it is a different financial year. Understood? So health distributors and eagle distributors each considered the return as fresh, fresh supply accordingly issued invoice for the return supply. So health distributors is a registered person while eagle is a composition taxpayer. So health distributors added a world I T C of twenty five thousand. And the tax value was taxable value was two lakh fifty thousand. Now on the, at the time of. Return of this medicines on account of expiry I T C available to Y B L. On the basis of fresh invoice. Is rupees thirty thousand. These expired medicines were destroyed by Y B L on twenty seventh. February two thousand twenty six, so Y B L had a world I T C of twenty five thousand. And the taxable value was two lakh fifty thousand while. Health distributors returned these goods back to Y B L. The. I T C. See, when wealth, when Y B L sold medicines to health distributors. There was a taxable invoice given, correct tax invoice given. Now, when. The distributor is returning back the medicines to the company, then there should also be an invoice as per the G S T numbers. So, so it is easy to make. Book adjustments and the debit note and the credit note, otherwise that adjustment should not be possible. So eagle distributors is a composition taxpayer at the time of return of these medicines on account of expiry, the tax as applicable based on rates applicable to either. Eagle distributors as a composition taxpayer is ten thousand under G S T. So you know that a composition taxpayer. Does not take any I T C and has to pay G S T in full. Hope I am correct? So now what is the question asking us from us? In case of J J Pharma distributors and K K Pharma distributors on receipt of these expired medicines. Y B L has issued a credit note for the return of supply of expired medicines. Y B L. File its annual return for financial year two thousand twenty five twenty six on fifth of December two thousand twenty six. Again, the expired medicines were immediately destroyed on their receipt. Now what is the question related to this next? Let's go and see. I think I should not, I did not take this question on detail because the case study was. Very simple in language, now they are asking about the G S T. It is about the indirect tax matter. Now the students who have been learning and who have been appearing for group two. For them, this would not be in. Now case study. Do you think this has anything relation in, any relation with the case study now?
No sir.
Yes, so that is all. Say suppose you are doing this question as five forty or five forty five. And maybe you are not able to read through the case study, but just looking at this question, you would have written the answer in the next ten minutes. But how this, how this have been possible if you would have seen the question earlier? Otherwise, what happens is now. We are already panicked. And we do not even write five marks answer properly, correct? So that is how we should control our brain. Hope I am making some sense.
Sir, bol raha sir, three thousand, three thousand I T C to reversal hoga na isme.
I am not going to that technical question, but which, which you are talking about case number? Hello?
Yeah, yes sir, case one sir. Last para main, yeah na, job seventeen subsection five clause age of C G S T two and seventeen, therefore. I T C of thirty thousand would be reversal. Sir, the thing is that any destroyed goods are damaged or lost, for those items, the I T C to be reversed. As per the I T C.
So when I supplied goods, I had given I T C of twenty five thousand, now when. And this health distributor supplied me the, me back the goods. I got an I T C of thirty thousand and that medicines have entirely destroyed. So the entire thirty thousand which was on account of return of the expired medicines, I need to reverse it. So which three thousand you are talking about?
Thirty thousand sir, value tha to, thirty thousand to value tha, invoice value tha to.
No, no, no.
Thirty thousand to I T C nahi tha, thirty thousand to value tha, sahith.
I T C available.
It is talking about therefore I T C of thirty thousand. See, it's a value only, but the concept is very clear, sir, provision is talked about if goods is destroyed or damaged or lost. The I T C for that should be reversed, I T C cannot be climbed, that is a provision as per the I T, in the red flags, G S T.
Yes. So I hope. Should I go to case two, case three and case four? Or should I go to the other part of the case study so that I can give more insights on how to read the case study? So they have again created four cases. And now you are to solve the. G S T related question that what I T C is to be reversed. In terms of section seventeen five age of the C G S T app. Moving forward, let's see about N X A three, what is it talking about? N X A three suspected fraud in revenue reporting of Y B L, so R T Ganesh, the audit manager. So see the email is coming from a K K dot com, so that means it's not with the company. Has written an email to Karthik Murthy. So R T could be a senior article assistant and writing an email to the partner or to the manager, Mr. Karthik. Dear sir, as per the accounting policies followed by Y B L. Revenue from sale of medicines is recognized when control of the goods or services transferred to the stockist. At an amount that reflects the consideration that the company expects to receive. Okay, correct, this is as per the standards. Revenue from sales of medicines recognized net of accrual for sales written discounts. This, the estimates are complex and requires significant judgment and estimation by the company for establishing an appropriate accrual. So she has given a background, R T has given a very good background, she is a very good article, looks to be like. And but while carrying out the audit procedures, we noticed certain suspicious entries. Towards the end of the year, the company reported a spike in the sale of medicines with eight specific stockists. The goods were dispatched and the sales were recorded as revenue, such sales amounted to fifty lakhs. Since payment is due for after three months, the corresponding receivable was also recorded. However, within the first week, two weeks of April two thousand twenty six, the entire sales of fifty lakhs were returned to the company. We detected this while performing the aging analysis of account receivables as of thirty first March. Two thousand twenty six. Further, these returns were not considered in the, in the calculations while creating the sales, sale return provision for financial year twenty five twenty six. The inventory was received and the account receivable was reversed as soon as the goods were returned to the Y B L warehouses. We were unable to get satisfactory answers for the reason for this sales return for the. Management, we suspect this to be a case of channels stuffing. Where sales are artificially inflated towards the year end and even though company notice knows that the stockist cannot sell so much entry. Inventory in the near term, once the year ends, the goods are returned by the stockist. The sales and account receivables are reversed in the next year, hence the entire sequence of transactions nets out in within a short span of time. But spread over different financial year. This does indicate an attempt to misstate the revenue and profit for the year, it is an attempt to mislead the investors and other users of financial statements. We wish to highlight this odd issue to you at the earliest, please provide your appropriate guidance. Have you understood what has happened? They have booked a revenue of fifty lakhs for eight specific stockists towards the year end and the entire. Stock got returned back to the company. In the next financial year. So secure or twenty five twenty six sales has become higher by fifty lakhs and the trade receivables has also become higher by fifty lakhs, but actually. Those goods got returned back immediately. In the maybe, in the next month before the finalization of accounts. So maybe you are auditing this company in the month of September or in the month of August and you came to know that the fifty lakhs goods which were dispersed. Towards the end of the year where you had did accounting entry that data's account debit to sales. Has been. Returned back to the company in the month of May, in that case, what would you do? You would have recognized the entry for provision for sales return. Because you know already that these goods have returned back to the company before the finalization of accounts. Though after the financial year end. So R T said that. It could be a possible situation of revenue misstatement. Now what is the question asked?
Yes sir, this is a possible statement as well as the things said the subsequent event, this is. Maybe the evidence is available earlier, the return, we need to adjust in the financials. We should not recognize any. Revenue for that, I believe. And also in the Indian accounting standard that India is one on five, also they talk about that. We should know that amount is probably, we should receive the amount.
So M C Q four is given the unsatisfactory explanations from the management for the year. And year end sale increase and the subsequent sale return in April of the subsequent year. C A Karthik has reasoned to believe that offense of fraud of rupees fifty lakhs has been committed by the. Amplifiers or officers suggest the company which are the following actions taken by each party in such. Circumstances. C A Karthik should report to the board or audit committee immediately, not later, not later than two days of his knowledge of the fraud. C A Karthik should forward his report along with the reply or observations of the board or audit committee to the central government within fifteen days. Y B L is bound to disclose certain specific details in the board report such as nature of the fraud, approximate amount involved, remedial actions. Taken parties involved etc. And C A Karthik should also report the nature and amount of fraud in the caro. Now they are asking which option should be done. So do you think option one should be there?
Sure, option one is correct because any fraud we need to communicate to the audit committee within two days, that is correct.
Yeah, since it is less than one crore, correct?
Sir, even if it is less than one crore or more than one crore, that is not matter. The thing is that within forty five days, the committee has to respond to us, otherwise the auditor will. Report to the central government if the amount is more than one crore.
Correct, absolutely.
But in this case, only is the less than fifty, I think fifty lakhs is somewhat, I believe.
Yes. And C A Karthik should forward his report along with the reply to the central government within fifteen days, that is not required, correct? Since it is.
Yeah, that is not required, amount is very less. Two is incorrect.
Two is incorrect, correct, absolutely. Y B L is bound to disclose certain specific details in the board report, so for a disclosure in the. Board report for fraud reporting by the management, there is very threshold, so they have, these elements have to be reported in the board report, that is absolutely correct. Now for. Karthik should report the nature and amount of fraud in the company's auditor's report. Order two thousand twenty, so caro was not required auditor to report frauds only.
There are three clause seventeen. Sir, caro, we need to report sir, irrespective of the amount.
So apart from option number two, all are correct. So now if you can correlate, see an exit number three was. Just a minute, okay? Hello? So now if you look at the case study and the question part. So they have covered half and page, half page on this study material, yes? Maybe this should have been one and a half page or two pages in the. Question paper, but was this totally, totally relevant for you guys? So that is why studying the question and interlinking with your case study is very, very important. Correct? So once you start doing the case study, you have to make some small notes so that. You understand what is the question about, what is the study talking about? So there are some technical questions with respect to, I think, India's thirty eight. So now there is one M C Q. Number three. Let us go through that, it is talking about. While checking the internal records for the medicines. That were returned on account of expiry, it was found that many of the medicines were slow moving items on further inquiry with the stockist. It was found that one of the contributors was the lack of the product awareness amongst the public. To address this resma pata, the head of sales and marketing decided to start a marketing advertisement campaign that will be conducted over different media, television, social media and print media. The total cost of the campaign will be ten lakhs, Neerav Jyoti's chief financial. Officer has approved this amount and would create. Fifty lakhs additional profit over the next two years. The campaign began in two thousand twenty six, January two thousand twenty six and tele- advertisements will be telecast for the next two years. What should be the value of intangible asset that should. That Y B L should recognize in its balance sheet?
Sir, advertisement cost and employee cost, all this cost we are not. Sir, advertisement cost and employee cost, all this cost we are not recognized as intangible assets, sir. As for India's thirty eight, that is very, very sure.
So since this is to be charged to the P L, there will be nothing, it will be capitalization in, intangible cost. At the far most, if this ten lakhs has been paid in advance in the January two thousand twenty six itself, then there will be some prepared expense, correct?
Ye- yes, sir, e- even up to that free development cost, that before development, we need expenses. After development, development stage once started only, we can able to recognize as intangible assets.
So, M C Q, M C Q four, we are done, M C Q five. With respect to termination of employment of resma pathak, any, any of them, which of the following statements is correct? So they had done some fraudulent activity of revenue booking of fifty lakhs. So the question is relating to the Companies Act. Section two hundred and eighteen, which talks that. When there is an investigation going on, the company cannot dismiss the employees without obtaining the permission of the tribunal.
Yes, sir, this is as per the N C L D.
Yeah, and if the company does not receive any reply within thirty days of making the application for permission to terminate their employment, it is considered as a due approval. Therefore, the termination of their services on November, thirtieth November two thousand twenty six is valid.
Yes, sir, they should not terminate.
So do you have any questions on this case study? Or how did you find it? Just before one, one and a half of this case study was looking very complicated, yes? Was it actually complicated as we, as we were thinking about? If we would have been read, read this case study carefully in the first ten minutes?
See, actually, the thing is that we tensed when you are seeing the question. But now after your discussion, so see how to go through, how to make the nodes, everything, now we, our mind is very peaceful now. See, uh, now we are able to track somewhat.
Correct, very good. So, I think we have forty minutes time still with us, forty, forty-five minutes. Uh, I would not like to take the another case study because it would again takes much time and I, I think I would be repeating the most same of the techniques. Rather, I would like you students to take through some of the practical examples of the. Annual reports of some pharma companies, should I do that? Hello.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. So how do you? Download the reports of listed companies, any idea, anyone who has done before during the course of articles, if we did?
M C A portal, sir.
M C A portal? How do you download from M C A portal? Can you please show me?
Sir, I never downloaded any report from the listed company, sir, please show to me. I don't have chance, uh, a chance to look into those things.
Okay, yeah, so you are only saying that it is to be downloaded from M C A, yes?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm not saying, sir.
Who was saying M C A?
Me, sir, Otun, Otunu Mundro.
See, when you go to M C A site, then M C A, yes, all the public documents of a company would be available, but there you need to make a payment of rupees hundred.
Uh, one hundred rupees, yes, sir.
And you would be given, getting only balance sheet in the P L, not, not other documents. But as Mister Sanjay has rightly pointed out, as per regulation forty-six of the C B L O D R, annual report should be uploaded in the. Website of the company and every listed company is mandatedly required to have a website. Yes, sir. Apart from that, I can show you, take you through the website of, uh, stock exchange. N S C India dot com or B S C India dot com, whatever it is, let me. Take you through B S C India dot com. I hope you are able to see the website of Bombay Stock Exchange.
Yes, sir, B S C.
Tell me any pharma company which you want to see the annual report, any listed company.
Ranbaxy. Ranbaxy is limited.
Ranbaxy is listed, I'm not sure it is listed, or I think maybe it is listed in N S C, I do not know. It's Sun Pharma, okay, Sun Pharma is a very, very big company. And you just have to mention name of the company on the right-hand side of the website where you are getting gate code. Now see, you are able to see what is the market capitalization of Sun Pharma, what is the market free float? What are the fifty-two week, week, high price, what are the fifty-two week low price, what is the current price now? You can see the three months chart, six months chart. Maybe you guys are quite comfortable with the screener dot com or the moneycontrol dot com, yes? Correct. But you have to also be comfortable on how to use the website of stock exchanges. Because as a professional, when you represent an industry or maybe you become a CFO in the next fifteen years, twenty years. Then you should be knowing about the stock exchanges because these stock exchanges are very important because your equity shares are listed here. Correct, now how do we see what has been filed? So there are, you can see, there are a lot of options on the left-hand side of the website, correct? One is financials. See, you can find annual reports over here. For all the available public years. If you had been gone, gone through M C A, then M C A would have taken time, it takes time for three hours to process and all everything. But here you can quickly click the annual report, now you are getting the annual report. Now, I don't want you to take through the entire annual report, but I'll just give you a brief so that whenever you see next annual report. Next time, then you don't feel awkwardness. See, this is the notice of. Sun Pharma given by the company to the stock exchange regarding that my annual. Report is this and this and this is the notice of the thirty-eight A G M and all, yes, and nowadays A G M can be. Online, so that is why the option of e-votings are even. See, this is the brandings, uh, done by the company, that is why brandings are very, very important. So they have given a temple, a table of contacts, contents. From which you can see your financial statements which have been audited by article assistants and chartered accountants like you are available in page number one thirty-four to. Three hundred and ten, and that consists of both standalone and consolidated audit report and the financial statements. Before that, this management discussion and analysis report, board report, corporate governance report, B R S R report are very, very important for you. Correct? And, and one was mentioning, annual reports are also available in the website, so yes, they have given a link as well. So they have, since Sun, Sun Pharma is a pharmaceutical company, they have given a brief about their company, they have given about their mission and vision. They have talked that they are, they have reached more than hundred and, hundred plus countries, they have forty-three thousand global employees wise. So these graphical presentations are very, very important, so now looking at this annual report first ten pages. You are very sure enough that whatever data was processed in the finance department or the audit department, when presented graphically, looks very, very. Good and looks very catchy, correct? That is how, when you are given case studies and that's why you prepare notes over there. So that graphical presentation gives you a quick, uh, brief about the case study or about the company, correct? Hello. So there are the tenure highlights, financial highlights of this company. So the chairman and managing director, the Mister Dilip Sangvi.
Sir, are you showing, showing something, some, something to us, only we could see the B S A portal.
Okay, okay, I had opened the annual report, sorry, my bad. Simultaneously, you can also try opening from your mobile phone or from the, uh.
Yes, yes, sir, I am also trying that only, sir.
Now you are able to see the annual report?
Yes, sir, very much.
Yeah, I was talking about these graphical presentations done by the company beautifully, the audit and the financial data summarized in the form of. Pie charts and the, and the bar diagrams and all so that it gives a quick insights to the company, that is how. We also chartered accountants should understand that these quick results are very, very important to us. Maybe the investors, maybe the board of directors or maybe the government or maybe the foreign, uh, or, uh, players who are looking into it. May not be able to have enough time to look at the financial statements, yes? We understand financial statements, but engineers, architects, other professionals do not understand financial statement. That is why for a comp, may, layman people, this kind of information gives very, very important quick insights. So that is why putting the financial information in a graphical form is all very important for us. That is why we as chartered accountants need to learn different techniques of Excel, maybe we need to learn Power B I. Maybe we need to, uh, learn T W, so that we be comfortable in our life later on in terms of reporting and all. So they have given a brief highlight about their operational experience, their operational performance and the global business performance and all. So they have written about what R and Ds they have done throughout the year, what acquisitions have they done? So, since Sun Pharma is not in our syllabus, obviously will not create everything. But see, there are maybe top three companies, top five companies in every sector. Maybe aviation, restaurants, resorts, manufacturing, uh, trading, F, FMCG. So you can always go through, go to this B S C India dot com, N S C India dot com and read about their annual reports, just go through it. So that you will feel good and loo- looking at their website and. Learning about them. Because general knowledge is also very, very important. So in, what do they do in management discussion analysis report, is they correlate their business? Uh, they talk about different segments of business, see how beautifully it has been talked about the, uh. Global pharmaceutical industry growth from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-eight. So how is Japan pharmaceutical spending? They have given a, uh, summary of measured deals. See, this deal should have been covering more than thousand pages and more than ten thousand pages. But the moment they have summarized in a single page and beautifully, uh. Designed, it gives a lot of information, correct? So we as chartered accountants should be able to summarize our findings, our observations, our important points in a. They have also visualized some pictures of technology being used in pharmaceutical sector, they have talked about their business model. May not have given the entire brief, but they have, the, just touched upon. See, you can see the revenue is one lakh sixty-two thousand four hundred three million, that means sixteen thousand two forty crores of the. Revenue recognized from U S business. This is only for U S business, thirty-one percent of share of revenue coming from U S business. In India, it is thirty-three percent revenue. They have talked on how much, now let's go to the financial statements directly. See, this is more on the corporate governance report, that is particularly covered by. C B L O D R, A O C two, which is referred in section one eighty-eight, talks about transactions with related parties. Recently, there has been a circular also from C B on. Reporting of related party transactions, secretarial audit report, while going through the secretarial audit reporting, you can get a lot of insights. At what rules and regulations were applicable to company, what were not applicable, what were violated or what were complied. So you can see what were the regulations applicable to. This industry in terms of drugs and narcotics and all, everything. See, this is a report on CSR, whatever you have learned in schedule seven to the Companies Act and section one thirty-five, the Companies Act. Has to be reported in a format that is called CSR report. That report is describing with C A, so that there is uniformity across the industry. So even if you search, uh, read about four or five such CSR reports, CSR reports are generally not more than five or six pages. Then you will be able to correlate what you have studied in section one thirty-five and se- schedule seven. In this way, if you start correlating what you have studied, uh, with your. Practical examples like this, then appearing not only I B S paper, but appearing other exam should also be easy. And you will remember for a longer time. See, the more the larger company, the more detailed information they try to give, to make it more, uh, to recognizing its responsibility more towards the. Customers, clients, stakeholders, shareholders, government. They have given the pattern of the shareholder, how many institutional investors, how many foreigners, how many Indians. They have given a brief about credit ratings, this, all this information are to be disclosed as per C B L O D R. That is why they have disclosed over there, otherwise few companies would have reported, few companies would not have been reported. See, these are the B R S R report, so since I think this is one of the top one thousand. Uh, listed companies by market capitalization, hence it is required to mandatorily get a B R S R report. Not going through the context of B R S R report, that could be a separate session sometime. See, these are the financial statements, many of you have prepared audit report during an articles period, yes? Key audit matter which is applicable only for audit reports of listed companies. So even if you go through ten listed companies annual report, you will get a lot of, lot of insights. And very quickly, not to memorize anything or not to keep anything in, on record. As at the beginning of the session, we were mentioning about. Uh, India's thirty-eight, let us go to the property plant and equipment. And see something of, about. What, what they have disclosed, what they have reported, what they have recognized, this is the significant accounting policies. So significant accounting policies are those policies which are adopted by the company during the preparation of their financial statements. So even if you go through these significant accounting policies of few companies, you would be able to get a lot of, lot of insights and that would be helpful for their. Practical life as well as for exams. See, this one is property plant and equipment, so they have some freehold land, some buildings and some plant and equipment. Furniture, vehicle and office equipment. They have, uh, also used India's one-on-six, they must have got some la- land on lease, on financial lease. That is why they have recognized right of use assets and corresponding lease liability and doing the accounting of depreciation on R O U and. accounting of depreciation on rou and unwinding of interest on the lease liability so they have also classified certain assets as held for sale in accordance with the index see other than internally generated goodwill have been recognized over here and they have also given a disclosure that the recoverable amount of goodwill has been determined based on the value in use calculations which use cash flow projections covering generally a period of five years which are based on key assumptions so intensive assets under development also have been disclosed here reported here so this way you can go through annual reports of any five or ten listed companies and maybe I would request the ic to team to specific sessions some of the sessions not on case studies but taking through the annual reports of the listed entities as well and anyone who has worked on ipo assignment during their article ship what about others hello even worked on ipo so today so how how things work out hello hello
sir yes sir
so anyone on your anyone on uh computer screen now maybe if I can uh tell my students tell our students only to browse on their cells so that I'll keep on guiding mega would you like to take that opportunity of getting uh sharing the screen okay I think sharing of screen is not allowed for the participants so let me do my screen sharing as we as we all know that sebi is the security is the market regulator for securities market correct
yes yes sir
so any so I'll show you a brief thoda sa process bata dekha hu aapko see are you able to see the website of sevi
not yet
okay
no
is it visible now
yeah yeah yes yes sir sebi
if you go through this filings then you can see public issues correct so before filing the prospectus and all they have to file drsp that is called draft rate gearing prospectus with the sebi so if you go here and you will find out the list of drsp's filed by ipo bond companies it is about the main board sme board is on the stock exchange website only because the finding is made with the stock exchange in the case of a small uh sme board here you can find that a lot of companies getting filed drsp's so would you like to see the prospectus of lens card lot of news you have been seeing on linkedin and a lot of instagram and facebook and all but would you like to see what documents actually the lens card had filed must have filed
yeah
so if you go on to the public issues and if you see final offer documents filed with roc see lens card lens card solutions limited I am told to see this is the now I'll take you through briefly in ten minutes next ten minutes how does the drsp look like so that maybe you can go through other drsp's and see some of the drsp's in next in one or two hours while you are having some idle time at home so that you get a understanding of it are you able to see the pdf file
no sir yes sir mera to aagya pdf no sir not visible sir not visible sir
no no
no sir
not yet
yeah we can able to see your face only sir
okay now
no sir not it
I hope you are able to see now yes finally
not that visible sir but some screen is coming on but content is not there he announced
visible now so these are upper page of the prospectus yes where they mention about the issue size you can see a two thousand one hundred and fifty fresh issue size and offer for sale is uh not given yet but it is about six thousand and somewhere around five thousand something that would be finalized post the offer so what do you mean by offer for sale offer for sale means the existing shareholders are selling their shares and fresh issue sizes the the fresh shares are being allocated so that money is being coming to the company in offer for sale the existing shareholders get the money because since they sell their shares the company is not going to get anything and who are the selling shareholder puse bansal himself his wife nev bansala mit choudri and there are a lot of five six other selling shareholders also and what was the average weighted cost of equation see this was the average average weighted cost of equation had certified by so and so chartered accountant form and if you go then here you will find a table of contents and the initial basis of the see I'll just quickly take through what are these table of contents let's let's go first to the financial information page number three ninety eight or let me take you through very from the beginning only seven one is general background of the company and the abbreviation has been used and the they have a lot of ccps and all they have mentioned about that then comes certain background information about the company about the financial reports what are the exchange rates used and all so some of the forward-looking statements which they have made are having the words such as aim anticipate should should will continue and all so summary of the offer document is given here what business they are building who are their promoters what is the offer size what is they what are they going to do with the money objects of the offer they are going to do some capex some expenditure related to lease rent license agreement related payments for our cocoa stores cocoa stores means company owned company operated they are going to invest something on technology as well and they are also going to do we expenditure for brand marketing and business proportion expense so as a chartered accountant you should be aware that when a company is bringing ipo you are not only relying on the newspaper reports or the uh linkedins and all to verify the information but if you on a single click on a few clicks you can go to the document available in the sebi website and you can see what is actually genuine or not or what is the insight about that company because when a company is getting listed they have to disclose everything before getting listed yes so they have given the corporate structure of the company so lens card solutions limited you can see they are having the main company the holding the proposed listed entities having a lot of subsidiaries some I think outside India as well as you can see there is a pt limited company that is based out of Singapore and again this company is having a lot of other subsidiary companies llc sl in different different countries Thailand and arabia and all very complex structure I am also looking for the first time they are also having some step down subsidiaries you can see one two three four five six layers of companies summary of related party transactions they have given a lot of related done a related party transactions which have been disclosed here dividend and all everything training expense sale of goods purchase a property plant and equipment and all anyone of you had seen such kind of rsp's earlier
lg company I have seen sir last time you have shown to us
okay okay thank you so they have given about the background of when did the shareholders acquire the share how did they acquire whether it was a bonus whether it was a conversion of ccps and all yes so the another is risk factors before that see when I was showing you at the first page what is the average weighted cost of equation the summary is given here risk factors there are two kind of risk factors one is internal risk factors one is external risk factors internal risk factors are those risk factors that within the entity that could bring a risk to the ipo or that could bring a risk to the company so I am not getting into one into one there could be some sixty seventy internal risk factors and some forty fifty external risk factors after that comes the financial statements and all yes the objects of the offer and all capital structure are thoroughly discussed I think in the first page the twelve contents is very very important for you to know so I would request at least if you are having one or two hours time and do not put out entire daytime because I understand the exams are approaching here in january and march sorry january and may but I would request sincerely request of few of our students our students to go through a few one or two drsp's or rsp's to have a understanding so that that will help them once they become chartered accountant as well they they will get that confidence so any questions from the student side so that I can take it I think maybe ic representative mr deepak tha is also online uh there were some questions regarding giving vette importance more vette importance to dt idt obviously I cannot help that but I believe that whatever the institute institute has been doing is very robust and there should not be any with giving more vette to tax and all because these case studies are very very important and during the course of life once you become a chartered accountant you will understand that you are being paid for or you are being hired for what robust knowledge what dynamic knowledge you carry out yes otherwise we would also be like other accountants and other professionals mr sanjay has raised a question what could be the reason for offloading the promoters and their existing shareholders instead of increasing the equity is it because they get cash well uh oil offloading which they would not get when increasing they because anyway but the yes yes lens card I am not connected to lens card in any way I am not sure about what is the story behind lens card I should not comment yes but offer for sale is generally done for uh sharing the equity also so that the cash comes in the end of the shareholder so there are a lot of private equity players who have invested before the company comes with an ipo so sometimes they require an exit yes so that is why it is not only the promoters who are able to share the sales but anyone who is a public shareholders can also share sell the share during the course of an ipo announcement over to subject to certain requirements so sebi icdr talks about the entire thing what is to be locked in what is not to be locked in and all that's a different ball game you're not taking not talking much about it uh over to you deepak guptaji
sir sir one thing I would say that after seeing the couple of lectures from you your side and other lecture faculty as well now after seeing going through all the document see what is this ibs is nothing I believe see this kind of document and after completing a ca we have a lot of role to play I am looking at now after seeing the thousand eighty three pages the ibs basics nothing very very small we can easily crack it that much confident I am having now sir
deepak ji I think you should take a reel or take a video of samyan samyanathanji and put it in the ic with uh youtube channel or somewhere ic instagram also a lot of things are going on so that our students get encouragement from him
uh okay sir
yes yes please
yes sir me september september twenty five mein exam diya tha both group ke both group diya tha mera first group clear ho gaya lekin second group mera ibs ke liye nahi hu mera aggregate ho gaya tha three hundred three hundred two aaya tha lekin i ibs mein thirty four aaya to sir ibs ke liye thora guidance de dijiye na sir ibs ibs mein kaisa exam ka din kaisa kon sa matlab four hour mere pas time hai lekin hundred marks ka paper hai mere ko hundred marks ki item karna chahiye ki me me thora selective wise kar kar punga
aapke aaj ka session kitna baje join kiya sabse pehle vo batao atanu mandal ji
haan sir sat baje sir seven
hum log six thirty days seven tak aabi yehi se baat chal
mera mera internet internet mein sir issue horada isliye
but you can I think these sessions are available on youtube you know I think I gave a lot of insights on this right topic I think I should not take much time but if you can take my number note down my number and you can call me sometime or you can talk to me separately also anyone can feel free to talk to me oh deepakji I'm about I'm I'm allowed to give my number yes and ic
sir agar aap permit karein to main inki query ka reply karta hu yahan pe hmm dikhie abhi main aapko ek example se batata hu ki abhi mere pas ek student ka phone aaya abhi kal kal ki baat hai ki mera ko to balki yaad nahi tha ki unhone bula ki sir aapne mere ko guide kiya tha aur mera ibs ka exam clear ho gaya us student ka jo students jo tha khali keval ibs ka paper hi rahe gaya tha to basically main is paper ke bare mein aapko ye batau hu ki ye jo paper hai na ye jaise ki abhi aapme se kisi ne bula ki is paper ye kuch nahi hai thik hai na sir annual reports waghara bilkul bilkul agar aap is paper ko proper planning or proper strategy ke saath dekh deni jao ge to ye paper kuch bhi nahi hai aap easy tarik se is paper ko clear hi nahi karo ge balki sixty plus marks bhi aayenge lekin iske liye aapko pata hona chahiye ki aapko parana kya hai aur aur parne ke alawa open book resources ko use kaise karna hai thik hai uske alawa aapko ye bhi pata hona chahiye ki kis tarik se aapko case study ke under answer draft karna hai thik hai ab main badata hu ki aapko ab jaise open book resources ki baat aati hai usse pehle ek baar sabse pehle students sabse badi mistake kya karte hai wo sochte hai ki humne set a aur set b jo hai wo already clear kar liya hai ab clear kar to liya lekin utna seriousness se clear nahi kiya to us chakkar mein kya hota hai ki students ko jo jaise low low case specific provision hai ya strategic management ke tools hai usko apply karnen mein problem aati hai to To ab sabse pehle agar aap past exam ke under weightage dekheenge to around, agar dekheenge set A or B ki jo weightage hai. Wo one hundred fifty number ki paper mein thirty-six marks ke equal hai. Yani ki agar aap kahu to around thirty percent. Yani ki agar aapko so number ka paper karna hai, to so main se agar aapko around, agar one hundred fifty main se thirty percent ho gaya. Around aapka thirty-seven, thirty-seven number ka kabhi forty-two ka bhi aaya, kabhi thirty-five ka bhi aaya, to main thirty percent maan ke chal raha hu. To yani ki ek paper ke under, agar aap is form ke subject chhod ke ja reh hai, to iska matlab thirty percent to aapne marks aise hi chhod diye. To isliye sabse pehla step yeh hai ki jaise agar koi bhi company hai. To uske upar corporate governance to lagna hi lagana hai, to isliye aap law ko ignore kar hi nahi sakte. Main jo matlab, pichhe agar past exam ka trend dekhe, to related party ke upar question ahi raha exam ke under. Isi tarikse tema ke upar question ahi raha exam ke under, thik hai? To isliye aapse request hai ki aap jo law ka specific portion hai. Koi companies act jo hai, wo har ek company ke upar apply hoga, thik hai? Isi tarikse jo aapka C B L O D R, C B L O D R, wo har ek listed company ke upar apply hoga, thik hai? To isliye law specifically law ke perspective se jo hai, wo aap please. Jo corporate governance ka portion hai, usko ignore na karein, thik hai? Second, agar koi bhi company hai, uske saath koi bhi aisa question easily connect ho jata hai. Jahan pe four X aati hai, ab four X, four X a gaya to A F M se four X ka question connect ho jayega aur idhar tema ka question connect ho jayega. To isliye aap is tarikse sochenge ki agar koi real life ki company hai, to usme kis tarikse kya question connect ho sakta hai? Har ek company to mindning up mein nahi jayegi na, to isliye aap socho ki kya best possibility hai question ki connectivity ki. Kis scenario mein kya connect ho sakta hai? Isi tarikse set B ke under jo strategic models hai, please don't ignore. Koi ye multi-disciplinary case study with strategic management paper hai, to aap strategic management ke koi bhi models ko ignore na karein. Jaise supply chain management, last to last exam mein question supply chain management se tha. Is bar exam ke under jo question tha, wo triple bottom line se tha, dono hi strategic models hai. Saath mein is bar question quarter, five quarters se bhi tha, to isliye meri request yeh hai. Ki ab strategic models ko aap ek baar agar apply karenge, to wo aap usko easily apply kar sakte hai. Thik hai? Uske liye aap kya kijiye, exam mein mind map bana ke leke jaiye, chart bana ke leke jaiye. Or best chart, best notes wo hai jo aap apne khud banate hai, thik hai? Aap beset kisi ke bhi banae, mere effort kar lene, lekin agar aapne apne hands se notes ko khud banaaya hai. To wo notes aap kabhi bhi nahi bhul sakte, thik hai? To matlab yeh kuch choti, choti baate hai ki jo hume dhaan rakhni hai. Agar aapko conceptual clarity hai, to aap, dekhiye, open book resources ka matlab yeh nahi hota. Ki uthaya kitam se question chhaab diya, wo bhi aap tab tak nahi kar pao ge, jab tak aapko pata hi nahi hoga ki yeh question aapka aaya kahan se hai. Yeh aapko tabhi pata lagega, jab aapne at least ek ya do baar us concepts ko dekha hoga, thik hai? I B S ka paper bilkul bhi difficult nahi hai, lekin yeh aapko samajhna hai ki wo jo concept hai, agar aapne padhi hui hai. To exam mein easily apply kar loge, lekin agar padhi nahi hogi, to aapko pata hi nahi hoga kon se subject mein. Agar pata bhi lag gaya, to concept ko dhunoge, dhun bhi liya, to laga loge. Agar laga liya, to ho sakta hai ki aap galat jagah pe lagaon, ya wrong way mein lagaon. Jitni der mein us question ko solve karo ge na, itni der mein aapka time kill ho jayega. To yani ki aap open book resources ka best use tabhi kar sakte hu. Jab aapne, aapko conceptual understanding hai ya aapne ek ya do baar us resources ko go through kiya hai. Thik hai? To. Ab, matlab aapko ab clear huwa, jo matlab main. Hah, hah, hah. Ab bacho bhi yeh galat time hi hoti hai ki kitam exam mein jayenge, ja ke usko dhunenge, nahi dhunna nahi hai, yeh paper, yeh paper yeh nahi hai ki aap. Ki open book resource ko aap wahan se dhun reh hai aur wahan ja ke apply karein, nahi hoga, kabhi aap so kitabe le jao, tab bhi kuch nahi hoga. Sif, sif aapko, sif thode se jo aapke notes hai, wo hi sufficient hai. Jo aapne apne notes banaye, wo hi sufficient hai, thik hai? Aapko to sida panch paper hai aapke, thik hai? Group number do mein chhata I B S, panch paper, un panch paper ke under bhi aapka koi core paper hoga. Ab students karte hai ki hum group ek ke paper kyu badhe, group do de reh hai to, thik hai? Lekin group ek ke under suppose aap F R uthate hu, to aap yeh maan ke chalo ki F R aapke baad mein bhi kam hone wala hai. Aapko real life mein bhi kam aayega, jab aap C A ban jao ge. Isi tarikse yeh maan ke chalo ki agar aap koi paper, koi or paper bhi aapko parana padha hai group one ka. Aap yeh kyu sochne hu ki aapko group do ke under do, do paper dekhi pass hona hai. Aap yeh manho ki group do ke under chaar paper hai, ab yeh matlab aapko soch badhni hai. Planning, strategy ke saath jao ge, to main aapko guarantee ke saath kare hu, yeh exam clear hoga. To yehi huwa, us lad, matlab us student ka jo exam tha, wo clear hu I B S ka, wo bhi good score ke saath. Thik hai na? To or kabhi bhi koi issue aaye, to board aapke saath hai. Or saath mein jaise abhi sir ne bhi guide ki, aapko annual report show ki, abhi yahan pe kisi ne bula bhi ki annual report, aap jaise. Annual report ko scroll karo, thik hai? Scroll karo ge, to aapko pata lagega ki kis tarikse, kisi, kisi specific university ke under accounting standard supply ho re, kaise karo ke provision supply ho re. Agar aap scroll hi kar loge na, jaise matlab us khali time hai, padhte, padhte thoda se bore ho gaye. To kisi annual company ki report ko scroll karo, to wahan se bhi matlab aapko kam se kam panch ya desh number ka paper mil sakta hai. Koi aapko samajh aayega ki kis tarikse actually mein real life mein ho raha hai. Jo hum wahan pe real life mein kar reh hai aur jo hum iha theoretical knowledge karre, iska hi connection I B S ka paper hai. Thik hai? Baaki abhi maine, isi tarikse aapko jo hai, proper planning ke saath aapko study karni hai. Isi tarikse M C Q ko kaise attempt karna hai, thik hai? Yeh bhi apne aapme ek study hai. Thik hai? Ki ab M C Q ke under ki, ki kya hota hai ki aapko dhunna hoga. Ki chaar, chaar options diye hai ki kon sa option lagega, to iske liye usme kya hai ki aapko most likely dekhte hai.
Raana padega peh, pehle.
Anji.
M C Q item ke liye, concept pehle clear huna padega.
Bilkul, agar concept clear hai, tabhi aap jo hai, wrong jo information hai, wrong option jo hai, usko eliminate karo. Main humesha kahata hu ki aapko elimination rule follow karna hai, aap pehle eliminate karna shuru kar do. Phir jab do option to aapke easily eliminate ho jayenge, or jo baaki do bachay hain na, usme se ek aap tabhi handle kar pao ge. Jab aap koi conceptual clarity hai, thik hai na? To again game aata hai conceptual clarity ke upar, thik hai? To at least ek baar to aapko module ko dekna hoga, parana hoga, thik hai? Main yeh nahi kahenge, yahan pe aapko expert knowledge ki jorat hai, kam se kam basic conceptual understanding hogi. To yeh paper clear hoga hi hoga, thik hai? Or saath mein achhe marks ke saath bhi jao ge, ab jaise maine aapko bataa ki thirty-six marks ka paper yahan se aara, to ek tarikse kya hai? Ki yeh aapka, agar aapko pehle group ke bhi papers ke, ka knowledge hai, to yeh aapki bonus ka kam karega. Set A or B ki jo additional tayyaari hai, thik hai? Ya aapko additional marks achieve karnen mein aapko help karega, thik hai? Aap yeh socho, thik hai? Aap future ka socho, ab yeh mat socho na ki do paper hai, aap socho chaar paper hai. Chaar paper, main bhi yeh socho na ki agar aapne F R utha liya pehle group se, to F R to aapko aage bhi kam aana hai na real life mein. To yeh soch, yeh mentality ke saath jao ge, to paper clear ho gayi hoga. Or fir bhi koi problem aati hai, aap always most welcome, aap kabhi bhi board ke saath connect kar sakte hai.
Okay sir, I have a question, like I am a very old student, I have cleared group one of final. Very much before, now I want, I am, I have re-registered for group two. So for writing this paper six, which all papers from group one again I will have to study to clear paper six.
From group one, you may identify one or two paper, thik hai? In addition to. Your spawn paper, okay? For example, for example, you identify financial reporting. This, this is highly recommended for all students. A strong grip on F R will not only help you score well in I B S. But also prove immensely useful in your professional life, as I told you earlier. It builds the foundation, thik hai? Foundation for interpretation and application of accounting standards.
Okay.
Okay, similarly A F M, if, if you have good. Uh, uh practical problem solving capability, then. It is very good paper, okay?
Okay, okay.
Normally four X question, you may get four X questions from A F M, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh auditing, a good choice for students who have already good exposure or good practical experience through art. Article chip or work experience, okay? You may identify one or two paper of your choice.
Okay.
And have good understanding, good conceptual clarity. In addition to spawn, spawn is your bonus, it will increase your marks from fifty to seventy.
Oh, okay.
Understand?
Yeah, yeah, okay sir, thank you.
Any other query? Okay, can I wind up this session? Okay, on behalf of everyone here, I would like to sincerely thank. C A Anshul sir, for taking out his busy schedule to be with us today. We truly appreciate the way you explain how tax laws, financial reporting, regulation. And strategic models are all linked together. Your examples made us clear that real business decisions are not about one subject alone. It's a holistic approach. This is exactly the integrated business solution is. Sir, your insight have given us clarity, confidence and we are grateful for your guidance. Thank you so much sir, for giving us time today, to all our students.
It is my pleasure to be in the I C A Board of Studies and I got to know that. Uh someone who is much, much senior also is here on the webinar. And he qualified his first group in nineteen ninety-five and now he is appearing for second group, yes? Uh my, my warm number state to you sir, I was just two years when you qualified the first group. And I am very fortunate that you are here in the group and maybe. If you, if can, if you can pass on your number, I think Board of Studies will also be in touch with you and I will also be in touch with yourself separately.
Thank you sir, and to all the students who joined today. Thank you for your active participation and your good questions. Your interest made the session even more meaningful. Wishing you all the very best in your preparation. Once again, a big thank you to sir and to everyone who made the session a success. Session over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much sir, I am really motivated on seeing, showing your document, no C B document, all these things, really. It's really motivated sir.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your wonderful insight during this session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes.